All right, good evening and welcome to our meeting. We're gonna have our invocation from Associate Minister Segal Krut Thurman from Divine Faith Ministries International. Uh, Minister.
Good evening Commissioners.
Good evening. We find ourselves in need of prayer once again, especially for the families in Florida and for the officer who's lost his life for their family as well. And please pray for our children in our county.
Absolutely.
It be followed by a pledge of allegiance if you would, please stand with me.
I do invite you Commissioners and everyone in the room to bow your heads as we pray. Dear wise and loving Father, first let us just say thank you God on behalf of those who are gathered here today. Thank you for your many and abundant blessings. Thank you for life itself and the measure of health that we need to fulfill our callings for sustenance, for purpose and meaning in our lives. Thank you God for the ability to be involved in useful work God and the honor of bearing appropriate useful responsibilities. Thank you for loving us eternally from your boundless and gracious nature. Your scripture has said that citizens ought to obey the governing authorities. And since you have established those very authorities to promote peace and order and justice for us, we work with them Father. Therefore, I pray for our elected officials right now and our law enforcement agencies. Father, we lift up those in Florida who've experienced deep and great loss. We lift up the families of our fallen officers Father, and we thank you Lord God. We pray in particular for this board of Commissioners and we're asking that you would graciously grant them wisdom to govern amid the varying interests and issues, a sense of welfare to the needs of the people, and a keen thirst for justice and righteousness. Father, we pray for personal peace in their lives and joy in their tasks. I pray for the agenda set before us this evening. Give us assurance of what would please you and what would benefit those who live and work in and around our beloved Clayton County. It's in the mighty name of Jesus and everyone who agreed with this prayer said, "Amen."
I pledge allegiance to the flag of the United States of America and to the republic for which it stands, one nation, under God, indivisible, with liberty and justice for all.
Good evening and welcome to everyone. This is the February 2nd, 2018 regular business meeting. The first order of business is the adoption of the agenda. Does any member want to offer any amendments?
Uh, Madam Clerk, I would like to remove item 13, which is a board appointment to the Department of Behavior, Health and Development of Disabilities for Region 3. I thought we were gonna have a conflict with the lady we appointed last time, but uh, there is no conflict, so she's good to serve. Is there a second?
I'll second that.
Those in favor, aye?
Aye.
Opposed, is unanimous?
Are there any further amendments?
Uh, yes, I would like to take off number 12, appointment to the Parks and Recreation Advisory Board.
Is there a second?
Second, Mr. Chair.
Those in favor, aye?
Aye.
Opposed, is unanimous?
Are there any further amendments? Hearing none, may we have a motion to adopt the agenda with the approved amendments?
So moved.
Second.
It's approved by Commissioner Gregory, seconded by Commissioner Edmondson. Those in favor, aye?
Aye.
Opposed, is unanimous?
The board will now hear a presentation. This is an overview of the process system evaluation be presented by the Office of Planning, Zoning and Sustainability, as well as the Community Development Department. Ms. Kimberly Smith, zoning administrator, will you please come forward?
Good evening Chairman, Vice Chairman and fellow board members. I'm Kimberly Smith with the Office of Planning, Zoning and Sustainability. And as stated, this is a customary efficiency through technology, the interface between the Office of Community Development and the Office of Planning, Zoning and Sustainability. And in a never-ending effort to review ourselves, our processes, and listen to you, to the citizens, to the property owners, to the builders, to developers of Clayton County, myself and Mr. Patrick Agike, the Director of Community Development. We have thoroughly reviewed our processes through both of our offices. We've reviewed our systems, our processes, our automations of permitting and licenses, and the reviews of the zoning department. And in that current system, unfortunately, what we found is that it's somewhat fragmented. And it's a manual process unfortunately. And it was designed at a different time. But what we're looking to do is to enhance that process. We've worked together in the interim time. We are coming up with a new system, but in the interim time and to enhance the current system. Next slide please. I want to share with you some of the typical processing times that are currently in place. After review of the system, we are committed to having business license reviews reviewed in one day review time. And that is actually done over the counter with coordination between our two departments. There's actually a person in place if there happens to be a problem with an application, where we have a person in place to call the applicant directly. For example, if there is a problem with a house plan or a building permit, we have now have a person and staff in place to coordinate the processing time and to eliminate waiting times. The typical time for building permits is 14 days. And in addition, if you want an addition, if you want a fence, if you want an accessory structure for your properties, the typical processing time is a five to 10 day time depending on the complexity of your project. And again, I want to emphasize that there is a person in place that monitors, reviews, processing issues, that will contact applicants directly. The current workflow, although we are working on automating our process and integrating our process, this workflow will not actually change. And the current process is that applications are initiated in the Community Development Department. Any license, any permit, any application, it is in taking at that component, at that department, Community Development. Planning and zoning, the Office of Planning and Zoning, what we do, we review zonings for all permits, license and applications. We are also the routing agency. And in this current workflow process, routing is very important because it ties in all of the other review agencies, which could be fire, emergency management, the water authority, the health department and transportation development. The planning, the Office of Planning and Zoning is responsible for accumulating all of those comments and routing them out and getting them to the Department of Community Development for permits to be issued. And this workflow is gonna work with the previous slide, which was mandating the new time slots that we've adopted. We are in transition and so here are some of the things that we have done after listening to our customers, the Board of Commissioners and our citizens on some of the concerns that they had. We have revamped all of our Office of Planning and Zoning applications for the customers, for easy access, for easy reading, for user-friendliness. We have enhanced our customer instructions and guides. We have also implemented new documents and checklists, so the applicant will know in advance what is the expectation for having a complete application. And we'll take care of that on the front end, not during the process, which can sometime increase approval times. And one of the most important things that we've done is we have enhanced the county website with the Office of Planning and Zoning. That gives you better customer information and ways to navigate through the permitting system. And the last thing that I've said again, but I'll say, the Planning and Zoning Office has recently fully staffed and we are ready to assist. What's on the horizon? Well, let me tell you. Um, there is a new system coming to Clayton County. It is a unified portal for all application processes for Community Development Department, for permits, for license, for planning and zoning department. It is intuitive, it is user-friendly, it's easy to process, and it is done completely online. In the comfort of your own home, you will be able to submit any application that you would like for doing business with Clayton County. And the most important thing is that it's all integrated through all departments and it's tied directly through our finance system. And the next slides will give you examples of what this new Tyler Integrated Automated System will do. This particular slide talks about how you file online, you'll be able to pay your fees online, you'll be able to check your status online, you will have your own dashboards to find out statuses. That will cut down calls to our office and our staff. It will be at your fingertips 24 hours a day. And it will walk you completely through any of the building permit processes, any of the zoning review processes that, any of the businesses that you will have with Clayton County. It is a complete citizen self-serve one-stop shop for doing business with Clayton County. And it is due to go live in December of 2018. If you have any questions, I'll be happy to answer.
All right, have any board member have any questions for Ms. Smith?
I do, one quick question on the signs, Mr. Chairman, I'm sorry. The 30-day sign, is that including all signs or is that specific for permanent signs?
That is the overall time period for signs in general. Now, if you have a temporary sign, it's most likely gonna be approved within the 30 days. But we are given 30 days to approve any type of sign that is issued.
Cause I don't think people are going through that permitting process for those temporary signs. I see them everywhere, that's why I was asking.
And we have code enforcement in place to address those issues.
Any other questions? Thank you for your presentation, Ms. Smith.
Uh, the board will now consider the consent agenda.
Tie back to that. Okay, at this time, we're gonna consider for approval our consent agenda. Are there any items that a board member would like to see removed from the consent agenda? Hearing none.
I do, I do Chair. And only for a separate vote on the trails. There was some funding that's going towards the trails.
Where is that? What item?
Uh... G.
All right, there's a motion to take item G of the consent agenda to be heard on the regular meeting agenda. Is there a second? Um, second the motion. Are there any questions?
No sir.
All right, hearing none, those in favor, aye?
Aye.
Opposed, is unanimous? Any other items?
No sir.
All right, I'll take a motion to approve the consent agenda with the exception of item G. Is there a second?
Second.
All those in favor?
You want the motion?
I'm sorry, who made the motion, Mr. Chairman?
Oh, I'm sorry.
So moved.
No, you made.
Okay, I'll second the motion, those in favor, aye?
Aye.
Opposed, is unanimous?
I'll take the trails.
Mr. Chair, I think Ms. Davis wants some clarification on who made that motion, is that gonna...
Commissioner Hamburg made the motion, I second the motion.
Thank you, item number G, this is a budget amendment, Ramona Bivens, Chief Financial Officer.
Ms. Bivens.
Good evening, Mr. Chairman, Mr. Vice Chair and Commissioners. Budget Amendment 4-73 is for 2015 SPOST. It's a transfer of funds in the amount of $72,100 for the International Park Trails Phase 4, Perimeter Park for the agreement with PATH Foundation.
Is there a motion?
So moved.
Is there a second?
Second, Mr. Chair.
Any questions? No questions? Those in favor, aye?
Aye.
Opposed?
Nay.
Four, one, four to one, it passes.
Thank you.
All right, next we have, go ahead, Madam Clerk.
Item number seven, this is a public hearing on the stream buffer variance request. The location is 4820 Highway 42. Uh, Mr. Chuck Reed, if you would, please come forward to facilitate the public hearing.
Chairman, you may call for...
Yeah, at this time, we'll have a public hearing in reference to the stream buffer variance. Is there anybody here who would like to speak?
Good evening Commissioners, I'm Michelle Battle with Battle Law here representing High Point Analytics. Um, we are seeking a stream buffer variance for the property at 4820 Highway 42. I'm not sure if you all have a visual, I'll try and put this up.
What was that old company there, Ms. Battle, I can't think of the name of it.
Um, I'm not sure, I know there was a, I think it was just a warehouse or something that had been there previously.
Yeah, but it was another company, real popular company, but they closed, but go on.
Um, the applicant is seeking to acquire this property to redevelop it. And um, we are looking at the existing building, which is gonna be converted into self-storage. And um, the property is already currently zoned for this particular use. With regards to the stream buffer variance that we're requesting, the existing building actually encroaches in certain look, the rear yard into the stream buffer, both the 25% impervious stream buffer and the 50-foot additional stream buffer requirement. Additionally, there is an asphalt driveway that goes along the rear, such that when you come in off of Highway 42, you can go around the rear of the building for purposes of loading and the like, I assume from the prior user, to go out off of Oakdale Drive. Oak Drive, sorry. And so, we are looking solely to be allowed to have those improvements legally within those setback requirements and in the stream buffer requirement. This is really from a perspective of being able to obtain financing for the building. Many lenders are unwilling to loan funds on buildings that are not in compliance with the zoning ordinance. So we have gone through the process of obtaining setback variances for the other components of the building that encroach into the setbacks. And then this last piece was with regards to the stream buffers. So, we are not talking about new improvements, we're talking about simply the existing improvements being allowed to remain in their place.
Okay, any questions for Ms. Battle?
I just see, um, can we ask, I see Mr. Franks back there, can he speak to just the stream buffer? Is he able to do that? With the water authority, no?
Well, if he would like to speak, at this time, if anybody would like to speak for or against this.
Is Kimberly still here, Ms. Smith?
Mr. Chairman?
Is Ms. Smith still here? Kimberly Smith, she's still here? She went back to the office?
Whatever you wanted to say.
Would you like to speak, Mr. Garber?
Yes, sir.
And so, come forth. Uh, Mr. Reed, you were saying?
Typically, those who signed up beforehand.
Is there a signup sheet that we already?
I guess you can call anybody.
Okay, Mr. Garber, please.
Mickey Garber, Unincorporated Rex, Georgia. I reside at, on Highway 42. I really don't understand all the impact of the variance. However, I want to remind you that our water supply is gathered from all the runoff from the streams and that's how we drink. So, remember it when you get thirsty.
Thank you, sir.
Yeah, she's here. I just have some questions, a couple of questions about this. So, even though this building is already there, is it gonna be grandfathered in or would it have to abide by the restrictions of the overlay district on Highway 42? I know the zoning is already there, when, I understand, Ms. Battle, we're not voting on the zoning, it's already there. But will, will this zoning require them to follow the overlay rules that are in place?
According to my understanding of the, the stream buffer variance requests, is this impacts just those particular standards? Any other zoning standards would be in place? So if it's in the overlay district, then they would have to abide by the overlay district standards. This is just asking for a variance from the stream buffer?
Right, I understand that, but I just, since it's brought up, I just thought to ask it. I know that her zone isn't, we're not voting on whether she can have it or not. Okay, that's all my question.
Any other questions? Um, from the board, from Ms. Smith? Okay, does anybody else would like to say anything? Okay, Mr. Reed, this is one of the items we're gonna vote on, correct?
That's correct.
Commissioner?
Yes, sir, Mr. Chairman, I offer a motion that we accept the stream buffer variance request.
Before that, you'd like to close public?
Oh, close it out.
You're right, I appreciate that. Okay, at this time, I'll take a motion to adjourn from the public hearing.
So moved.
Is there a second?
Second.
Those in favor, aye?
Aye.
Opposed, is unanimous? At this time, Commissioner?
Yes, sir, this is Chairman, I offer motion to accept the stream buffer, stream buffer variance request as requested by the partitioner at 4820 Highway 42.
Is there a second?
Second.
Any questions?
I have a question. Can we at least address the, what the, what Mr. Mickey Garber asked, is it gonna affect the water supply? I just think that the public needs that, if it's a public hearing, we should be able to explain it, that simple is that.
Um, the building is already in place as indicated. There is no new improvement that would further encroach into that setback. Um, so whatever impact, so to speak, is already in place, it's been there. That building, I believe, has been there for over 20-plus years, so...
Thank you.
Kinda is what it is, whether we, whether we occupy it or not.
Thank you.
Yes ma'am.
Thank you so much.
Any other questions? Those in favor, aye?
Aye.
Opposed, is unanimous?
Thank you.
Mr. Chairman, the next items are board appointments.
Okay, at this time, we'll take board appointments. The first one's for the appointment to the Mental Health Developmental Disabilities and Addictive Diseases Community Service Board to fulfill the unexpired term of Priscilla Schmidt.
Yes, sir.
The term expires on June 30th, 2019, full board appointment.
Yes, sir, I make a recommendation that we appoint Khadija Works to that board.
Is there a second? I'll second the motion, those in favor, aye?
Aye.
Opposed, is unanimous? All right, next appointment is also to the Mental Health Developmental Disabilities Addictive Diseases Community Service Board. Fill the unexpired term of Elaine McGruder. Term expires on June 30th, 2019, full board appointment. Is there an appointment? I'd like to recommend Junior Jackson, is there a second?
A second.
All right, Commissioner Hamburg, second the motion, those in favor, aye?
Aye.
Opposed, is unanimous? Next appointment is to the Animal Control Board to fill the expiring term of Millard Hall. This is a three-year term expiring March 12th, 2021, full board, is there a recommendation? Recommendation. Madam Clerk will hold it till the next meeting. Also, we have an appointment, again, to the Animal Control Board to fill the expiring term of Dr. Don McMillan Senior. This is three-year term expiring March 12th, 2021. Is there a recommendation?
I have a question, do, is, does this board require a veterinarian? Is this part, do you know Chuck, I'm sorry for asking you that out of the air, but do you know if this board requires a veterinarian to be on that board?
I think I heard one time it does.
Commissioner, I don't know that off the top of my head, but I certainly could look at it and get back to you.
Did you have something, Commissioner Edmondson?
I spoke with Dr. McMillan Senior earlier today, he's, he's the chairman and he's interested in being reappointed.
Oh, okay, go ahead, yes.
Mr. Chairman, I'd like to make a motion for the reappointment of Dr. Donald McMillan Senior.
Is there a second?
I'll second that. I have a question.
Question, Commissioner?
How many boards does he serve on? This is a board he should be on, but how many?
This is his dad.
This is his only board.
That's not, okay, so this is dad, okay, no problem. Thank you.
Any other questions? All right, those in favor, aye?
Aye.
Opposed, is unanimous?
Mr. Chairman, item number 14, this is a public hearing. This is a zoning ordinance text amendment. The request is for the Board of Commissioners to consider the adoption of amendments to the official zoning ordinance and map and the future land use map and the zoning standards, which govern the exercise of zoning power of Clayton County. Uh, this is for property located at Members Drive in the Spivey Club subdivision, as well as 6564 Terra Boulevard.
And I believe this is a public hearing as well, so I'll call it a little bit of a public hearing. Uh, Mr. Reed, do you have anything to add in addition to that?
No.
Okay, so is there anyone to speak for or against reference to this public hearing? Hearing none, Commissioner Edmondson, do you have? Oh, let's go out, a public hearing, is there a motion?
So moved.
Is there a second?
Second.
Those in favor, aye?
Aye.
Opposed, is unanimous? Ms. Edmondson, do you have a recommendation?
I recommend approval.
Is there a second?
Second.
Any questions? Hearing none, those in favor, aye?
Aye.
Opposed, is unanimous?
Mr. Chairman, members of the board, this does conclude this evening's agenda. If there is no further business to discuss, do we have a request to go into executive?
Yes, litigation and personnel.
Do you have a request to go into executive session on litigation and personnel?
And real estate.
Yes, Madam Clerk.
And real estate.
And...
And real estate.
Litigation, personnel and real estate.
Okay, is there a motion?
So moved.
Executive session, is there a second?
Second.
Those in favor, aye? Opposed, is unanimous? Y'all have a good evening. Okay, if we please, if you're gonna leave the gallery, if you could go ahead and leave, we're gonna reconvene. Yep. All right, motion to reconvene. Is there a motion to reconvene?
Oh.
Is there a second?
Second.
Those in favor, aye?
Aye.
Opposed, is unanimous? Mr. Reed, would you like me to take these all together? Yes.
Okay. Um, the first is a settlement agreement with Huan, H-U-A-N, Nguyen, N-G-U-Y-E-N, for $19,000 relating to an accident that occurred on August 12th, 2013 at Lake Harbor Road near Hillcrest Drive. Uh, the second is a settlement in the amount of $20,000 for Sharon Sykes and Keary Sykes, K-E-A-H-R-I, relating to an automobile accident that occurred on June 19th, 2012, involving a vehicle that was fleeing from a Clayton County Sheriff's Office Deputy in Clayton County. And also to resolve civil action file number 2014 CV 014... C V zero one four two nine. Third is a settlement involving the workers' compensation claim of Ms. Denise Orr in the amount of one hundred and five dollars and thirty-six, I'm sorry, one hundred and five thousand thirty-six dollars, of which sixty-nine thousand four hundred and sixty-four dollars and nineteen cents is to be paid to the claimant, eight thousand six hundred and eighty-six dollars to be paid to Medicare savings account, one hundred dollars for a general release, and twenty-six thousand seven hundred and eighty-five dollars and eighty-one cents to the plaintiff's attorney. The next is approval of negotiated settlement between the county and C M E S Incorporated in the amount of four hundred and eighty thousand dollars to settle all claims that could have been asserted by C M E S relating to the Panola Road Forest Parkway widening project. In addition, requesting approval of agreement between the county and Ronald Lynn Brown Quality Carriers Quality Distribution Incorporated, Q C of Georgia Incorporated, and Zurich American Insurance Company, in which those parties, Brown Quality and Carriers, et cetera, had paid the county thirty-eight thousand dollars in compensation for subrogation payments for workers' compensation, compensation injury treatment of our employees, Angelina Davis, Kevin White, and Tony O'Boone arising out of a motor vehicle accident that occurred on June fourth, two thousand thirteen. And lastly, requesting approval of reimbursement to Judge Powers for her January eighteenth Cobra payment, subject to that amount being paid back to us by the state of Georgia in the amount of no more than six hundred dollars. And that's all.
All right, is there a motion to approve?
So moved.
Is there a second?
Second.
Any questions on any of the items?
I have a question.
Commissioner?
On that refund, and it may be someone from finance, and they're not here, but where does that, what fund does that thirty-eight thousand dollars go? The refund back to the county? Does anybody know?
I would think that goes back to the general fund.
I'm not sure, but I would think it would be the general fund.
Where is the CFO?
I can find that information, I'll get it to you.
Yeah, I just wanna know, 'cause I know an insurance company was involved too, right?
That's correct, they're, they're reimbursing us.
Ms. Stafford?
Okay, but it is because of the insurance, right? That's what I thought, I thought it was different, okay, thank you.
Any other questions? Hearing none, those in favor, aye?
Aye.
Oppose? Is she unanimous? Motion to adjourn.
So moved.
Is there a second, I'll second, those in favor, aye?
Aye.
Oppose? Is she unanimous? Y'all have a good night.